This is the Town of Fairfield Conservation Commission Inland Wetlands Agency.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, there we go. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Town of Fairfield Conservation Commission Inland Wetlands Agency, uh, meeting for February first, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P M., seven oh four, it looks like. Um, and I'll, uh, take role, my myself, Luke Thomas, um, Brian Pan, Rick Boucher, Jerry Alessi, Dave Fane. Um, Pedro Mahoney is on line. Peter Hood is here, as well as Ted Look singer. Um, and we have one, two, three, four, five. So I will appoint Ted and Kate. Um, and all for tonight's meeting. Uh, Kate, did you hear that? You're? Oh, oh.
There she is.
I did. I heard.
Okay, great. Is that Amanda? Is that Amanda? Can we? So I, I, on the screen, I see a name, Amanda. Doesn't have a last name, Amanda. Is that?
It's muted.
It is not.
It is not. Okay. Thank you. Um, so, okay, well, we have quorum and we have the two alternates, uh, appointed. Then I'll go to Roman three, uh, the approval of the draft meeting minutes in that wetlands agency meeting from January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Approve the minutes. Okay.
Um, barring no, no comments or questions, if there's a motion from Jay, second by Rick, uh, all in favor to approve the minutes.
I think number one.
Yep. And then number two is the sidewalk meeting, January eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, any questions, comments? No, Rick is motioning to, um, approve. Any seconds there?
Second.
Uh, has, uh, seconded? All in favor? Aye. Aye, yep. Okay. Um, four. This is, uh, Roman four, application for discussion. Uh, number one. W P dash twenty-two dash two nine three, Zhao, one thirty-seven Woods End Road, map one forty-five, parcel seventy, corrective action replants stream bank with native plantings, um, activity within a regulated area. Um, it, the application type, um, I don't, not sure. It doesn't say if it's significant or not significant. Public hearing petition has not been received as of December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. And the petition period ends January fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, the last day for a public hearing for decision is March tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. On the last regular meeting prior is March first, two thousand and twenty-three. The staff recommends table pending payment of application fees and departmental review. I do recall that the, uh, applicant, uh, asked for waiver. We waive some fees, um, assuming she had issues with the remaining fees, but, um, Tim, can you follow up with her, I guess, on that?
Yeah, her and I, uh, emailed, uh, this afternoon. Um, she does, um, have a problem, like you said, with the, uh, remaining fees of nine sixty down from a little over five thousand. Uh, I explained that the, uh, commission voted at the last meeting, um, to, uh, to uphold the recommended, um, fee price. And, um, that's.
That's where it stands.
That's where it stands.
All right. Well, um, do we need to vote to table it, or can we just not act on it?
I think you need a motion to table.
You need a motion, yeah?
Yeah.
Yep. All right. Anybody willing to do a motion to table this?
I'm making a motion. We find our recommendations table it.
Anybody?
Second.
Jerry.
Yep.
Um, Roman five, bills and bond releases. Number one, I W P twenty seventeen dash eighteen dash oh five Fairfield University, ten seventy North Benson Road. Bill wetlands and construct new to the school within a regulated area. Request of Walter Stapleton for final release of eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. Partial bond release of thirty-four thousand six hundred dollars was completed in September of two thousand and twenty-one. Staff recommends final bond release of eleven thousand eight hundred. Uh, Tim, is, is it all done? Is that why you're recommending everything?
I'll defer to Sarah.
Oh, Sarah. Okay.
Um, this past fall was the last of their invasive species spraying that they needed to do. Everything's been planted and has survived. Um, they are continuing maintenance on it. So everything, all of the conditions have.
Excellent. Okay. Anybody want to vote on that?
Make a motion to approve the bond release.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Jay's motion, Rick seconds, all in favor to the final bottom release?
Right.
Yep. Okay, we're good. Number two, I W P two thousand and thirteen dash fourteen dash thirteen Fairfield University, ten seventy North Benson Road. Construct school of nursing addition within a regulated area. Request of Walter Stapleton final release of three thousand. Partial bond release of forty-four thousand was completed January twenty eighteen. An additional partial bond release of two thousand eight hundred was completed in July twenty twenty-two. Same thing here, Sarah.
Same thing. The first release was for the majority of the work. The second was for plant survivability. And this final little bit was held for invasive species control, which they finished their five-year plan.
All right. Um, you know what? Let's do it together. And then also number three, I W P twenty twenty dash twenty-one dash seventeen Fairfield University, ten seventy-three North Benson Road, construct new residential townhouses in the vicinity, vicinity of Lynch Road within a regulated area. Request of Walter Stapleton for final bond release of seven thousand six hundred. Um, same issue, same there?
Yeah, that one didn't really have any big conditions with it. That was, they did that one really fast.
Did it. Okay.
I think that was a couple of years ago.
All right. Um, so a motion for both of those bond release. All ready to vote?
Rick.
Okay. Rick seconds. And it was Jay's original motion. Very good. Thank you. Um. Six, Roman six, legal enforcement actions. Number one, continued show cause hearing. Janine Norwood, one twenty Wickman Lane, Southport, um, map two, four, six, parcel five, C, clearing wetland vegetation and provision material within a wetland. Um, this is the one that we referred to the town attorney.
Right.
Um, so, Tim, is there an update, I guess, on that?
Update is, uh, that's correct. A memo went to, uh, Attorney Baldwin on this one. Uh, last week I did receive a list, uh, and of, of, uh, species and quantity being proposed of, um, vegetation. Uh, I did, um, look it over, although there was no map providing the locations of the plants. Uh, there were three species that I flagged, um, recommended, uh, replacement with natives, um, as they were non-native species. Uh, responded this week back to, uh, Ms. Norwood. Um, and she stated that, uh, I can expect something, um, next week. So. All right. Well, just keep in touch with the town attorney. Um, just want to make a point that, um, excuse me, um, you know, we're not just looking for a plant list. We don't, we were looking for documentation of what's there, what the nature of the violation, how extensive it was, and, and also the conservation areas that were disturbed, and then how they would restore them. I think we all have to be part and parcel of the same information we request.
So, uh, to follow on that, that's what I've been thinking. Is there, is there a reason it should be re-inspected? We, I just, we don't know what's.
It was just a preliminary. They want to throw it, throw it our way to see if it's stuck. It's.
Even the history, there was activity after the N O V the first time. So. I, I would, I would think that at this point, we refer it to the town attorney. He will know what the parameters are, what we need to do. Um, you know, he, as our attorney, he has our marching orders. But, uh, again, as an attorney, he may seek to tell them what's needed to be done prior to any lawsuit initiating. And if that doesn't happen, then he's going to initiate a law.
Gotcha.
So.
Wanted to just interject that while, you know, I appreciate them asking staff for guidance. Ultimately, the decision that's going to rest with the agency, they're going to have to deal with us. So.
Uh, Tim, you've already, uh, handed this off to Baldwin, attorney.
Yeah, that's correct. But I wasn't going to ignore.
Right.
You know, ignore their request for me to look at it.
How, how long has he had it?
Needs to be done, but, um, I would say at least a few weeks.
Few weeks. Okay.
I did get an email back from him today, uh, to, uh, with a request to discuss tomorrow.
Regarding this?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Great.
Excellent. All right. Uh, number two, under Roman, um, six, Essentia O'Malley, forty-seventh Creek Lane, map twelve, parcel three eighteen. But still, creating landscaping of a map wetland area, unregulated area without a permit. And Tim, you there?
Uh, the order did go out, um, as requested. Uh, I have not had any contact with the applicant.
Okay.
Or the property owner, I should say.
Right. Is this one that we should place on the land records also?
I would support that if you want to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we put the notice of violation on the land record until it's resolved.
And you have a second.
It's over a year old.
Oh. Oh.
A second. We have a second. I yield to yours. Jay, to place on land records, seconded by, uh, Pete. Um, any discussion?
Here.
Tim has, um, have you reached out to Alex, Alexandra at all, or she just submitted that, that report, the wetland delineation?
After that, uh, she received the order and then, uh, in her email, she was going, uh, to Europe to deal with her sick mother.
Okay.
So I think she's out of the country. I'm not sure when she returns.
We're told this month.
Yep. Okay.
But it does have the deadline in there and.
What's the deadline in there?
Uh, it was ninety days. Um, I think that put it in, I want to say April.
All right. Well, I mean, my concern is that the notice violation went out with a deadline for ninety days. I, I, I just, maybe it might be premature because we were giving them two different directions. Um, our director has sent them a letter saying, do something within the next ninety days. If they don't do anything within those next ninety days, I think then it might be an appropriate thing to go.
Yep.
Um, so that's my two cents, but it's still discussion time before we vote on the motion.
Okay, with that. The motion, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So unless you withdraw.
I'll draw the motion. Yeah.
Where are we? Or thank you. Roman seven, staff reports, reports from the conservation department. A C W C permit applications received for the notice violations issued zero.
Oh.
And then C, bonds released seven. Um, and then number two, conservation department, office relocation to Sullivan Independent Hall, first floor. Tim?
You're moving down.
Right, instead of.
It took Fridays ago, we moved to the first floor. So I just wanted everyone to know.
Okay.
Uh, if you come visit us, don't go up the stairs.
Yeah.
We got a great space. Uh, everyone's welcome. Stop by and say hello, including, including the public. We're adjacent to engineering.
Were you able to snag those cabinets?
Not yet.
All right. Good.
Okay.
All right. Now, Roman eight, public hearings, number one, W P dash twenty-two dash three twenty-two William Kenny Associates LLC, twenty-seven seventeen North Street, map one sixty-five parcel twenty-nine. Replace existing residential driveway crossing within a regulated area. Decision may be made if the public, if the hearing is completed, or the hearing may be continued. The original thirty-five day public hearing timeframe to complete the hearing ends on March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Sixty-five day time extension may be provided by the applicant. So a further public hearing continuation to May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three is possible. A potential continuation date is March first, two thousand and twenty-three. If the hearing is completed, the decision shall be made within thirty-five days of the close of the public hearing. The staff recommends approval with conditions. There's also a fee waiver request. Maybe, I, I think we should start with the fee waiver request before we get into, into this. Um, any comments, discussions about the fee waiver?
I think it's, uh, warranted. Um, I think there's the, the fee as, uh, first of all, it's, it's a, it's a good project. Then the applicant should be commended for doing this and not punished for doing it. Feel that the fee as calculated is a punishment and a deterrent for people to actually get, um, apply for app, for permits. And I don't think that's a position we want to be, put people in. I, I think that the, uh, the proposal that the applicant has made is reasonable and I would endorse it.
Any other comments on the fee?
How much is the app, the application?
Without any fee, it's like twelve thousand dollars.
It was twelve thousand dollars, but then there's also the permit fee and site disturbance fee after. So it ends up being placed to twenty-five thousand.
Thousand. Okay, there we go. That's, uh. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Hey, is it, at Lehman's terms, in some ways, you're kind of, are you posturing that it's kind of an encouragement for someone to not seek your permit?
Well, I think, I, I think when you have twenty-five, and when your fees exceed sometimes the cost of doing the, the work, and certainly, um, yeah, it's, 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 I think it's encouragement to do the, the work.
So what we're looking at, these are these fees that you guys, they're on the committee, the subcommittee on?
Yes.
Okay. I'm like, I'm gonna do work without seeking a permit.
Right. Oh, I, you know, and I think he, there's a fundamental order of fairness. And I, I just don't think it's fair to, 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 to really hit somebody with that. And then thi- this person is actually doing a really good thing, spending a lot of money to do a good job. Uh, you know, they don't have to. They could do something much less expensive, but they're doing the right thing. And I feel it's punishing them.
I'm grateful for your input. Learning a lot here. I, I went on the sidewalk and I agree with that. I mean, what they're, what they're planning on doing is a substantial improvement over what's there right now, and they should be commended for that.
Especially with the culvert.
Yeah, yeah. Comments? Um, the, the app.
I just, I, I just had one quick question. Have we ever done this before where we retroactively, um, because I know they've already paid the fee? Like, is it hard for the off, for the staff to then get this money back to them?
No. I, I, yeah.
We've done it before.
That, that's been done before, Kate.
Perfect. I, I agree with Jay's assessment. I think it's a wonderful project.
Excellent. Um, I, I have a quick question, only with, even though these new suggested fees that you guys are looking into, would the fee waiver amount, if we were to prove it, would it be similar to what those fees would be, or is it still higher?
I, we're looking at, I think, trying to get rid of the whole formalistic.
Oh, okay.
With all the square footage of this and square, you know, and, and, uh, have the fees. We looked at a lot of other towns. Most of it's per activity. Sometimes there's, you know, it's just more fees for work within the wetlands. But I think here it's just work per square foot of property, which, you know, if you want a big property, why should be punished for it?
Well, anybody want to put a motion up to, uh, accept or, uh, uh, the wa, the fee waiver?
I'd like the motion that we, uh, accept and approve of the fee waiver as.
Second.
Proposed by the applicant.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Kate's, uh, aye, all around. Good. All right. So now we go to the, uh, public hearing. I'll have a motion to open the public hearing. Anyone?
I might, to open the public hearing.
Second that? Eight seconds. There you go. Get everybody involved.
There.
All right. And who's here? Bill? Yeah. Good evening.
I'm Bill Kenny, the principal of William Kenny Associates in Fairfield. I'm a professional of wetland science. So I'm just. We worked with, uh, two other consultants on this project.
Do you want to put this table so we can get him to screen the shot?
Sure.
Here, um, map probably.
Yeah.
Screen.
Also with me this evening is Dick Koakel, the structural engineer, and then the.
Do you want to give this?
Get it all somehow.
Hunting Company was responsible for, uh, surveying and civil engineering.
You blaming them?
Nice catch. Yeah. There you go.
Although I have a.
They're, they're trying to screen share it.
Is this, is this okay?
Well, we're going to find out. This is, we're only like our third day.
Yeah.
Yeah. Second time.
Probably better off facing the camera in this way. We could just look at the screens.
Thank you for the fee. Appreciate that.
We're trying to go down that road, you know, as you heard. So it's, it was glad, it's a good opportunity to discuss it. Thank you.
This is a project that has a, it's a already developed residential property with a home, a driveway, septic system, things like that. It's in the northwestern portion of town, um, between Reading and Congress Street, just south of the North Street. It's a rear lot. So it has a pretty long driveway accessway getting to the rear portion of the lot. And there is a small brook that flows, uh, that where the driveway crosses a small, and there's existing, uh, pipes at that, at that crossing to plastic culverts, uh, or, you know, plastic culverts about eighteen inches in size. One is collapsing. And so, uh, the proposal is to remove those pipes and build a small bridge. Uh, so we'd be restoring or recreating the, the brook channel that was eliminated when the pipes were put in back when the house was. Project drawings, the project design is shown on two, two drawings by the Hunting Company and one by, uh, Koakel's structural engineers. And, uh, by information, if you'd like to have any questions.
Uh, I'll, I have one question before we get going. I, some of the documents that I read said that a portion of the driveway is either in an easement or a portion of the bridge will be on the, the abutting owner's property. Is that, can you clarify that?
Uh, the initial hundred feet or so of the driveway is shared with the neighbor that is right up on, on North Street. So that neighbor, this property is twenty-seven seventeen North Street.
Yeah.
Neighbor in front of them is twenty-seven eleven. So they share the driveway before the.
Before. Okay. So will there be any work or any damage, anything done in that area?
No, it's just construction access.
Just construction access. Okay. So there was no requirement, there's no need to get approval from that neighbor for anything that's being done on their property or anything like that.
I don't believe so.
Okay. That, thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. Commissioner.
Yeah, I have, um, so the, I, I actually, you know, as I said, I'm in favor of this project. I think it's a, a, a good project. And, um, there was, there are other alternatives that could have been done. This is probably the most expensive, but it's the most environmentally sensitive, um, alternative. And they're going to restore the stream channel, which is ideally what you want to see in every wetland crossing. When you do that, have the same substrate. But there's two comments from the engineering department, one which is not, um, overly problematic, regarding asking for a construction phase in, but the first comment, uh, is asking for hydrology for stating that there will be not an upstream or downstream impact as a result of this project. Um, my conundrum is I'm in favor of this project, but if we approve it tonight, start that report, we're not going to be able to make the finding that there's no impacts because we don't have that report as requested by the town engineer. Can you add any insight to that, Bill? And that, you know, it's a risk for the agency and this risk for the applicant to prove it without that information.
Jay, what you're saying, so essentially, right now, with the two pipes, their cross-sectional area, the size that allows for full water, the opening for the full water is smaller than what's going to be there with the bridge. So there is, uh, certainly on a much larger stream, you do something like that, and also you could have a big flood flow coming down and affecting a downstream property where the crossing today functions as a, as a dam. I suspect due to the size of this crook that it will not be a, a major issue. Um, but I can appreciate if, uh, the desire to wait and see what the hydraulic analysis shows.
I, I think that we should do that because it's a cleaner way of doing it. It's a better decision. If it's, you know, I, I appreciate, you know, wanting to get the approval, but I think we should defer, um, to the next meeting.
Yeah, it is, is, is willing to do the report as a condition. Yeah. Okay. All right. Excellent.
Yeah, sorry.
Any, uh, any other questions, comments, turns from any other commissioner?
I am grateful for that.
Um, right. If that's the case, then I'll, uh, I'll keep the public hearing aspect of this, uh, application open. Uh, we will wait for the report to come in. Um, I, I think we're, we're well within the timeframe, so we'll have it on for the March meeting. Hopefully by then we can get the report in, review it, and we discuss it, close the public hearing and see what happens then. Okay? Yes, very good.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Now we're, public hearings, uh, number two, continued W P dash twenty-two dash two five eight Fairfield Housing Corporation, nine eighty High Street, map seventy-seven, parcel three forty. Instruction of a forty-unit assisted multifamily affordable housing development within a regulated area. Decision may be made if the hearing is completed, or the hearing may be continued. The original thirty-five day public hearing timeframe to complete the hearing ended on December seventh, twenty twenty-two. Of the allowed sixty-five day time extension, a twenty-eight day time extension was granted to continue the hearing until January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. A further thirty-seven day time extension was granted until February tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, to allow the public hearing to be continued February first, two thousand and twenty-three. If necessary, the public hearing may be continued through a special inland wetlands agency meeting before February tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. If the hearing is completed, the decision shall be made within thirty-five days of the close of the hearing. Staff recommends review and further discussion of newly submitted documents and plans. Was, Tim, was this agenda prepared before we got the documents and plans that we got on the last couple of days? Is that what this is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that went out.
Yep. Okay. Um, all right. Well, we're still in the public hearing phase. Counsel?
Chairman.
How are you?
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Again, for the record, Brian was there for most of representing the applicant. We have our team present again this evening, and I will be brief this evening in closing. We have Ryan Baker to my right, your left, who's the licensed professional engineer, and Bill Kenny to his right, who's a soil scientist. I just note, you perceive the state of the health engineering department dated January twenty-fourth, noting the plans that we've, uh, submitted as revised, will assist in ten-year, two-year stormwater detection guidance, plus land. It's further note, engineering agreed with the comments, Mr. Baker. With suggestion of engineering, there was suggestion that the pre-construction test pissed with this by the engine. Mr. Baker indicated at the last hearing early January that he expected to meet with your, Rick Ginter, to discuss Mr. Ginter's, uh, few final comments, and he did that. Also having the record correspondence from Mr. Ginter dated January thirtieth of this year. Uh, and he sent a cover letter along with January third letter, noting that he's been in communication with Mr. Baker, and, uh, his comments are, quote, "very minor", end quote, "will have no impact on an approval at this time". I just want to thank this commission for the opportunity to art, for our team to work professionally with Mr. Ginter, your consultant, in this review process. It was very helpful and very beneficial, I think, to this process. Uh, and his, in his January thirtieth correspondence, Mr. Ginter made, uh, these several final comments. Uh, he notes that his comments are mostly construction-related. Thank you. Pressing them now, time for construction. And as to his final comments made in that letter of January thirty, we agree that they can be made conditions of approval should you choose this drug. And, uh, I do have, uh, our team here again, and I'm going to call Mr. Baker briefly for, uh, final comments. Not to repeat what you said already. If you had any comments, uh, some, uh, any documents, you know, since the, uh, last hearing, such as drainage, et cetera. Mr. Baker?
Uh, thank you. Yes, for the record, Brian Baker, licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut with civil one. Thank you, yes, for the record, Brian Baker, licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut with seven one. Just to go over the positions, I've got some revised sheets there, rather than pretty good sense, but it's like just to add them in the record. The, maybe you're at the toe of the slope of the detention basin. And then on the detail sheets for the cleanout for the stormwater pipes, we have T shown on there. The recommendation was to change TY for easier access, which we did. See on the screen there.
Yeah, right.
You can see the second detail and second down, you can see that's TY now where it goes to C. And then on the last page of the plans. There were that it, a response letter we compared, you know, indicated that would install the sanitary sewer lining WPCA requirements. Mr. Ginter asked that reflected on the plans. And he also wanted it reflected on the plans that the ENS, ENS inspection is taken place bi-weekly and within twenty-four hours of a storm event, which we agreed to. On this plan, I indicated those reports be submitted to the town land use office upon request. And in Mr. Ginter's final, one of his three comments, he recommended that they all go to the town staff automatically. I know in some towns they want you to submit them all the time or at their request, obviously we have to distribute them electronically, they have to do or whoever does the ENS inspection, whatever professional does, send an email, a copy of that report to, to Tim right after it's done. So we have no issue with that. The only one thing I don't believe or what I said at the last meeting per se. But you did get another second review memo from Mr. Trinkus. He reiterated his positions before, which I feel are unsubstantiated, doesn't have any calculations in that memo. He just pulls things, pulls things out of the P manual and says, I'll take them and it's going to be wetlands and it's going to be extreme volumes. Calculations provided. What it boils down to in his, his memo, he has issues with volumes of post-development stormwater. We provided calculations to Mr. Ginter, and they're in the report, that we're decreasing the volume of plenty of your storm, which is the most important. Other storms, yes, the volume does increase, that's the case with every site that you have detention and not full infiltration of every storm. So DEB says in their guidelines, okay, if you're going to increase the volume, let's meet groundwater recharge criterion and the stormwater or storm channel protection criteria, both of which we meet. So we move to take care of the issue of volume. With regards to infiltration rates, again, don't need to repeat myself, but he indicated there, you know, his whole review is based on it, water won't infiltrate, the water won't infiltrate. And then he pulls out the section of the P manual that says minimum field measured rates of point three inches per hour is recommended as a practical lower limit. He leaves it at that, we were slightly lower than that. But the next sentence in the manual says, lower infiltration rates may be acceptable, provided that the water quality, volume and drain time criteria are met. Drain time, they like, it's drained between twelve and forty-eight hours. Our system's drained at thirty-six hours and those calcs are in there. So we meet the criteria for infiltration and drainage. And lastly, treatment, the issue that there's somehow the stormwater is not going to be treated. The reason there isn't water quality volume criteria in the manual is to show that it hold that infiltrate. That takes care of your, your total suspended solids, your other measures, your harder pavements, get renovated, we meet all that. And that's before, put that aside, we meet the entire water quality line criteria. That doesn't take credit for the permeable pavement and the sand filter in the permeable pavement. Again, as I mentioned last time, removes ninety-nine percent of TSS, ninety-nine percent of hydrocarbons, seventy-five percent of percent of phosphorus. So do meet the criteria, meet the intent of the guidelines. And I think that the fact that you've had a third party review as though forcing the race, you came in as an independent and he agrees with us. You have your town and engineering department, who would not say that we're consistent with the recruit criteria if we were not. You have three different engineering entities that have said this is the bill work. And the one that does not is the one that was hired by the opposition and has not provided any concrete evidence as such.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
I have a question. So since, since we got really deep into the weeds on this stormwater stuff, probably more than I wanted to. But can you tie this all back into what the point of this agency sitting here is? Will there be an impact to wetlands and water courses from the proposed stormwater system? And going one step behind that, would we be able to get a statement from Mr. Ginter as to his opinion on the effect of the wetlands and water courses? I did not see that in his last letter.
What's that?
I know he's also
If he's online, that would be fine.
From my standpoint, as a professional engineer with twenty-eight years' experience in the business, certified professional in stormwater quality and certified professional in the world of sediment control, our design will not have a negative impact on the down gradient wetlands or the upland review.
Salt that's going to be used to, we were talking, Kate mentioned the permeable pavement, especially for the fire engine turnaround. So since it's not going to be sanded, there's going to be salt. I mean, there's various types of salt, but they each have their own drawbacks, meaning
Yeah, we will have
In fact, not only the perimeter plants and animals, but
That's the case with any parking lot that you pull down that has pervious pavement. It will be treated with salt, it can't be treated with sand because that will clog up the
Right, but I guess my point is that the salt, have you accommodated for the salt entering the wetlands, which it will do?
Correct, correct, but the salt will, it will flow through the soil and then also be hit the groundwater and be diluted through the groundwater prior to hitting that wetlands area. And the fact is with the, the fact that we have the Fairfield Housing Corporation as entity that's going to run this, they can monitor and minimize the amount of salt needs to be used. Also, we have a very flat parking area, where, you know, our cross pitch is two and a half percent. So you're, you're not going to have a lot, even, you know, not going to need a lot of salt on that. And then typically pervious pavement, because it's connected, it's air force to the subsurface below it. That does not have as much snow flow generated.
So you will be leveling the pitch that, because when, in layman's terms, when I stand in the field, that is, let's say above in terms of at a higher elevation, layman's terms, my interpretation is the water will drain into the wetlands eventually. You're going to come in, build a project, and that's going to be replaced with pavement and roots. So I see that as a big velocity increase, but your plan is to treat the water before it ends up in the wetlands.
Correct, and it's going to infiltrate into the ground.
In the wetlands.
No, into the ground below the parking area.
Right, we're talking layman's terms because I, there's people outside listening.
Sure. So the storm drainage system is designed for users to enter either the stone reservoir underneath the parking, will retain it. And the parking itself is trained towards the permeable pavement, which filters through a sand filter and into that stone reservoir under the, and then into the groundwater. So your, your water that has pollutants, your first flush, is infiltrated through the sand filter and then through the native soil. And then ultimately, will eventually be, hit the wetlands after it flows underground and comes out through the groundwater table. Your surface water in your larger storms that, that would not infiltrate, so when you get into the two year through a hundred year storm, there you worry more about flows that pollutants. And then there we decrease the flows to the wetlands in all design storms. What happens there is anything that, after it is retained in the underground detention under the parking area, we have that additional above ground wet bottom basin in the field adjacent to the wetlands to provide additional, additional renovation, additional detention, and it will also provide vegetation, even though by then smaller storms that carry the pollutants are going to be renovated in the parking area. But certainly there's still additional stormwater renovation in the wet bottom basin and the planted basin adjacent to the wetlands.
But I might add on the salt, please. Remember, these are traditional parking lots where you have pooling of water, you have a freeze thaw because because you have that thaw, the water will go through it. You may have on additional, where you have water wool. Oh, and then just sit there and have nowhere to go and love. So that's, that's one advantage, it would be less salt. There'd be some, but not a significant amount, given permeability as the water melts, it goes through this, just sit on top of it.
Yes, I have a question from Mr. Baker. Is there, are there challenges, like, because inevitably one of these is going to fail, right? I mean, with the, specific to the, whatever, storm trap or whatever they're called. Like, if this was over in some sort of like, you know, virgin ground or some grassed area, it seems to me like it's sort of academic how you would troubleshoot that and sort of fix it, replace it, add another system, like, I could sort of make sense of that. But as a non-engineer, like, you know, having these things entrapped underneath pavement, is there, is there a, a system or a way that you can troubleshoot and, and or replace, or is that just a huge?
There, you can maintain, there are access ports to maintain, should you need to get in there and vacuum out any sediment. I won't get sediment in there typically because it's going to be, we're not going to be sanding. Any sediment that ends up on top of the pervious pavement is part of the maintenance, that has to be vacuumed out. We do have catch bases with some sort of hooded outlets which need to be maintained, vacuumed out. Catch bases are then tied into the storm trap unit, which need to be inspected, and if sediment builds up in there, which I don't see, you would have to get through the pervas pavement and through the stone to get in there.
It will.
But, and, and then the only other spot that, you know, you want to have access to for maintenance is for the outlet structures. So from the storm trap units, they go into a drainage manhole that has a concrete weirthing with a three inch or four inch low flow orifice and a seven inch upper flow orifice. So those need to be, yeah, pulled, just like any catch base, you pull the cover, vacuum it out, make sure it's not
And can you look back, like, from some of those catch basins or the, like, can you, can they
Yeah, they would use a jet back, basically a machine that goes down and vacuums and sprays water as it goes. That's what they typically do, clean out pipes. And then just a big vacuum trucks for sucking out the catch bases. We don't have, the advantage here, don't have a large area, it's not steep, so we don't, and we're not going to produce some sand. So you're not, there's not going to be a heavy sediment load. Sometimes you have developments where you've got, you know, ten, fifteen acres of, of upland area that may, if it's, say, farm field produces, can produce a significant amount of sediment. You've got sediment loads coming on here. The only sediment that's, could potentially enter our system is what's generated by our site. Because we have the stone wall and there's no drainage from up above that comes onto our site until you go down to the eastern end. It runs through the stone wall and into the wetlands. Based on the use, size of the site, there's just not a significant sediment load. But there is a significant stormwater maintenance plan that has to happen every year or some things twice a year. Again, those reports will have to be submitted, Tim, to keep it maintained. And, and it says right in the last sentence of the story, this is where the argument is that all aspects of this design must be maintained in accordance with the approved design plans. So, I mean, these are concrete units that are capable of handling a fire truck loading right on top of them. But, you know, some, there was a faulty one and it collapsed for some reason. And because it has to be maintained in accordance with the system, it would have to be placed.
And you could do that, you could cut into the pervas pavement just the same way you can with like regular
I, I have a question. Judging from the, the plan, you know, approximately seventy-five percent of this parcel is going to be covered. And you've taken great steps to redirect the water. You've mentioned that there'll be inspections and cleanouts. What organization is responsible, I know it's not yours, but what organization is responsible for the maintenance and cleanout of that?
Fairfield Housing, the owner of the property, so Fairfield
Owner of the property is, okay.
Owner of the property is responsible.
What happens if the leaders get clogged or the, the pipes collapse underneath the parking lot? They just collapse underneath the parking lot?
Again, it would have to be, the system has to be maintained in accordance with the plan. So if a pipe collapses, honestly, if, because of the porous pavement, if for some reason see why I put it, but if one of the storm pipes collapsed, you probably wouldn't even know it because the water's going to be entering in through the porous pavement and into the system. But the systems do have to be inspected, so, but, I mean, these pipes and catch basins and everything that, that's built are designed for for traffic loading, so there's no, you know, knowing anticipated, you, you don't have, you just typically have pipes collapsing. Unless you put, you know, you put in a, you know, one of those, I don't know what type pipe it is, but, you know, the flexible yard drain plastic.
PVC?
It's high density polyester.
Yeah, because I actually had that in my backyard running out, and I actually had a pipe collapse, and we had to trench the whole backyard. I know, changed the pipe and half the time sediment gets in there from coming down from the gutters and gets stuck in the leaders and pipe actually collapsed and I had to dig up my whole backyard to do it. So, and that house was built in eighty-six, so it wasn't that long that we had to trench the whole backyard to do it. So I'm looking at, this is pretty much the same concept here, and we use the same products, that's why I have a question about that.
How did you know? How did you know that it collapsed? I mean, this is
When it's in my backyard, it was soaking wet. And it was like, okay, you have a pipe collapse, and we had, wrote a ruder come in, track and said, yeah, pipe collapsed.
I interpreted what Rick was asking was absent some sort of external, you know, element, why, I mean, is there going to be some sort of sustained maintenance schedule? Or, you know, forever? I mean, that's the kind of thing that the public is concerned about. Well, let me
In the record, you have in record, maintenance plan that includes inspections and maintenance and the obligation, it's standard, and your approvals, and the obligation to, should something lapse, whatever, present to fix it. That would be done.
And what's the shape of the fire engine turnaround? I'm not clear on, is that a, a Y or is it a, you know, the hammerhead? I'm not clear on how the I typically think of fire engines as making a circle.
Yeah, this was, this was reviewed with the fire
That was my question.
And they can, you know, we showed them and
Fire marshal has signed off on the
The fire chief who actually signed off. And they reviewed, they told us what truck, the biggest truck
That was my, I wanted that out there.
Not the one that may respond, but the biggest one
Right. Worst case scenario.
The largest aerial truck the town has.
We provide the attorney moving, faith that comes down the lane, pulls in here and chase
I got that, I just, typically people think of a turnaround as the requirement for a full circle, and I just wanted to
hammerhead that.
Right.
So I, I have a question, I've been trying to get my head around this, since I'm new to this commission over the course of the last two to three meetings. And this is a bit rhetorical. It seems that the primary thrust of the Trinkus memo is that infiltration will not work at this site. Are you dealing with poorly drained soil, very poorly drained soil, the definition of a wetland? All right, and you're relying on infiltration as part of the stormwater management system. Assuming he's right, how would you change the design to deal with excess water without infiltration as one of your strategies?
I can't assume he's right because he's wrong.
Well
The fact that we did the tests in the field for the and based on those rates, we have an up infiltration rate to beat the draining time. Now, the, the infiltration takes care of Now, the the infiltration takes care of the stormwater treatment. Much for our flows.
For flow, all right.
No, for flows, we took no credit for infiltration. The flows will still all be decreased in the same amount.
Okay.
Such a minimal amount, the infiltration's there for that initial stormwater treatment of the water quality volume. As I mentioned, if you took out the water quality volume. The sand filter in the pervious pavement provides excellent renovation for the stormwater, so you still have excellent renovation without the stormwater. Without the water body volume, but whether you run the numbers with or without the infiltration, because. When you're running the stormwater models, you're looking at, you know, in a hundred year storm, eight point four inches of rain. Current data from a bound, you know, if you're infiltrating quarter inch per hour.
Right.
So the flows themselves, storm closed developments with their flow will still be decreased by the same amount whether we. Infiltration is there.
So it's not dependent on infiltration as far as dealing with the volume or the flow? Okay.
Something else to keep in mind. Is that the thing that forces it uses rings, steel ramps that forces the water. Just vertical, measuring just the vertical, but in reality, as it does today, that's like. One spot, not everywhere.
Right.
The water will move laterally. It it moves down until it gets a layer or maybe the amount of water is exceeding the capacity of that underlying layer.
Excellent, right.
The upper layers usually are have a better, higher capacity to allow that water to move through it. And it's the underlying layer where the capacity is reduced. So if it hits that and if the storm. Velocity is great, flow is high enough that it exceeds that capacity of the underlying layer, it moves sideways. And that's what it does in storms today, and that's why as it comes down the slope. It breaks out at some point and that's why you get a wetland forming on the lower side of a slope. So it's going to to do that at this site, uh, even. It's a real conservative factor there. His his design is based just on that vertical element, but there's certainly a lateral.
The spread.
Yeah.
So and it's based on half of the measured field rate for a level of safety, so we measured at. Point three inches per hour, we designed at point one five inches per hour, so even, you know, to have a two times level of safety. So it's very conservative.
Okay.
And the use of um, the drainage class.
Yeah.
Poorly drained, very poorly drained. Uh, basically as to how deep down the water table is.
Right.
And so when you have a wetland down in the lower part, the water table is within a foot of the surface, so it's poorly drained. If you move up into the site, it's four feet or I can't remember the exact numbers, but it's deeper down, so then you have a moderately well drained or moving towards a well drained. Most of the site is moderately well drained, so it's four feet down before. So and that's similar to that the neighbor. Is just off the southeastern corner of the property, it's seventy six country road. I had actually had the wetlands on her property and I found poorly drained soils, but it was just in the area of a lot. And then in other parts of her property, just like this property, found moderately well drained soil, so there's other water tables at different depths and different parts. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Chair, I think Mr. Kenny has, I don't know if it angles, I think you summarized, you have three final comments he had. Again, thank you for attention to this application by the. The Fairfield Housing Authority, that's it. In connection, in connection with this proposal, there are no adverse impacts to any wetlands or water courses either on or off site. Both Mr. Kenny and Mr. Baker, you've already marched in your own experts, you had two of your own experts. Uh, legally, there is no need for a feasible alternative analysis absent any adverse effect. The onsite wetlands, we did the analysis and any of that, as you've heard. The court previously noted that the proposed buildings, which remain the same in this application as with our prior application. Are the most feasible and prudent, that was litigated by the courts. And as to the wetlands, we originally submitted a different alternative design which was presented back in October and our filing back in October. And after you selected an expert, Mr. Ginter, and after he and Mr. Hurley reviewed it. We submitted a revised plan after our team with uh, Mr. Ginter and the town discussed this. And and you you have a luxury in this case of having two experts that you did retain in addition to the town engineer to assist you in this process. Uh, for review on your behalf, you had Dr. Clemens, as you'll remember, confirmed that the onsite wetland, small wetland neither functions. As a vernal pool, nor does it support wetland to obligate species. And Mr. Ginter and we adopted his recommendation regarding the relocation of the detention area. Now you have his positive comments to our application. At the bottom line and the question before this commission is whether this development will have any impact on the wetland, either on or off site or wet courses. And there's no evidence of any such effect. There's no proposed activity within any inland wetlands and only minor work proposed ninety foot upland review area. That applies to this particular parcel. And activities or impacts uh, in an upland review area are not in a cell, as you know, a reason to deny application. Must be a likely adverse impact to a wetland water course for nine applications. I think the evidence in this case is clear that uh, existing upland review area. But if you heard from the experts, will be enhanced and will continue to moderate stormwater runoff. And to preserve the existing functions and values of the wetland on the property. Uh, there were comments by Mr. Trent, if our team has discussed them, but there's no substantial evidence of any impact presented by Mr. Trent. Letter suggests there may be increased runoff, there may be more volume, there may be polluted loads. He provided no analysis, no calculation, no numbers. And your consultant, Mr. Ginter, did not adopt Mr. Trent's analysis. Just want to comment briefly on the the so-called DEEP guidance documents. The appellate court, as I indicated previously, if Connecticut has ruled the DEEP guidance does not constitute a substantial evidence. And for instance, the two thousand and two guidelines for soil erosion and sediment control. Quote, do not themselves have the force of law, and although they may contain a set of beneficial recommendations. Non-adherence does not in itself imply a likelihood of adverse impacts on wetlands. That from the Chow's conclusions. But if you look at that document, if you look at those guidelines. Themselves, the document references that it's a guidance document, but does not replace professional judgment. And is exactly what Mr. Baker and Mr. Ginter and Mr. Kenny have provided, the professional judgment to those guidance documents. Finally, just to remind you, we're providing on about one third of the property, a conservation easement in perpetuity forever, there's going to be that conservation easement. The testimony of our expert team, your team, of the engineering department, all supports approval of this application. And again, my client thanks you for your time, your effort, your consideration. Because this is an important project for the Fairfield Housing Authority, for the Fairfield Housing Corporation and for the town. And the thousands of people need this type of housing that are on list waiting for it and are entitled to such assisted housing. Uh, under federal and state laws. So again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council, I have a couple of questions before um. The uh. This is, you know, it's a big project and we're not professionals and, you know, you are going to present to your professionals, experts here to give us information. And I I think we, as a committee, had voted on the, you know, the folks that we got um, to assist us. Now um. I don't think there's a mechanism currently in the town um, for payment of those experts. Is that something that you or your client would consider? Because, you know, we're looking at our regulations to do that, but right now that's not there. And I I know you do practice in other towns as well, some other towns do have that. And. Personally, I can understand the vernal pool expert, that's not, that's more of something we really needed to do and it didn't affect you. It was an answer, he gave us a report, fine, but um, the uh. The other report, Mr. Ginter. That helped you, that helped you now when you needed to go to the building department, that may have been other things, I believe, right? So so these engineering reports came in. Would your client be can willing to do, to to chip in, if you will, um, as a as a payment without, we have no authority to do that?
I think I would speak to them about that, I think they will consider that.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to bring it out there, I, you know where I stand or we stand as a committee at this point. But we are looking into that, so that'll be something that'll happen in the future. You know, we're a new board, new people, so thank you, I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions?
We're going to open up for, I'd like to get Mr. Ginter's opinion on the record.
Oh, sir, I'm sorry, I did not know that, yes. Is he, is he?
Second row on the left.
Yep, I I'm here.
Excellent, I I'm assuming you were listening in, can you, uh, at one point there was a a comment regarding your report, would you be able to? Comment there?
Certainly, so for the record, David Ginter, professional engineer with Redness Amade. Um, as has been discussed uh, for the last half hour or so, uh, I have reviewed. Uh, the revised documentation uh, provided uh, in the last handful of days. Um, uh, I have uh, provided my comments and and as discussed. Uh, the comments I've made are are uh, minor in nature. Um, again, as good as has been mentioned, construction document level details. Um, the big picture items that have been discussed for the last few months, in my opinion, have been addressed. Um, uh, to answer Mr. Fain's question, uh, do I believe that there's any adverse impacts to the wetlands, water courses or downstream facilities? Uh, is my professional opinion, uh, no, uh, there will be no adverse impacts to the onsite wetlands, water courses and downstream facilities. Uh, this plan, I believe, uh, meets the intent of of treatment and provides. Uh, enhanced uh, treatment for and protection for those wetlands that are on site there. I think, uh, I appreciate the the client or the applicant, excuse me, working uh, with us to uh, to make the changes. Uh, based on the recommendations that I've made throughout this process, uh, I know it's not easy. Uh, to do that, uh, and and they've made this process, I think, uh. Go very well uh, throughout, so I I do appreciate them on on that front, but again. It is my professional opinion that there will be no adverse impacts as a result of this uh, project.
Thank you very much. Any questions there?
I wonder if um, anyone. People would like to comment on the Public Act oh four two oh nine about the jurisdiction of the commission?
In what regard, Commissioner?
That's where the uh, statutes were amended to accommodate consideration of wildlife?
Okay, I I think what we can um.
I just was interested if any of them had an opinion on that.
What was that, that you number again?
About the Act oh four two oh nine?
The amendment to twenty two A.
Right.
Forty one C, and and we did address that in our December twenty third, two thousand and two course.
Well, I think it was dismissed, not so much addressed.
No, we recognize that uh, the uh, the change that the, we quoted specifically, the act does not protect non-wetland species. Or authorize the denial of an application for it regulated in, quote, in an area outside wetlands or water courses on the basis of an impact. Or effect on aquatic plant or animal life unless such activity will likely impact or affect the physical characteristics. Of such wetlands or water courses, so. So I know there's something circulated after the last hearing and that was the same thing that we cited in that letter for the same.
I'm just talking layman, because as I said, when I visit that spot. I see the same animals every time. And I'm just asking. I'm having a lot of difficulty because it's my opinion and you're not going to shake me and no one on this commission is going to shake me that. The second, the first bulldozer rolls, the animals that I see are done, they're gone. I I'm just curious, doesn't that in and of itself affect the wetland?
Commissioner.
The absence of them.
You you can make your vote based on however you want to.
Sure.
But counsel done here is basically stated the statute. In essence, he's answered your question. And and that's really all he can do at this point. Um, but we can have that discussion in our discussion on on the vote. And, you know, and let's see what plays out, but um, I think counsel has answered it based on the language of the statute.
Just wanted to echo um, your previous comment regarding the um. Use of the outside consultants and guidance agency, it's always a double edged sword. However, I think in this instance, it was extremely helpful and, you know, with all due respect to counsel, I don't agree with their um. Position that there was no feasible improvement alternative, because I think we've developed a feasible alternative. And by doing so, it taken, removed the doubt from my mind regarding this project and uh, came up, I think, with a much better project. Uh, overall for both for this agency and for the for the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any commissioners online? Kate, any anything there? You're good? She is, okay, anybody else, any other comments, questions while they're here? No? All right, um. Well. Anybody online um, with any new information? Or in response to what was said today?
Yes, I am online, I'd like to say something in response to everything I heard today. Can you hear me?
Okay, yeah, can you give me your name and uh, I guess it's an address?
Yes, seventy six country road, Altobelli, Elizabeth.
Yes.
It, this is absolutely unreal. We've just had storms, I've had water pooled in my entire. The southeast corner that goes up to the meadow. There is consistent water issues. There are wildlife that go between the meadow, like your commissioner is saying. They are all over the place, there's extenuating extensive wildlife here. There is so much that you will take away from this area. There will be one hundred people living in a forty unit assisted living, which is totally not the place, this is not a high density. Place and and you're going to tell me, I've already said this and I have, but I'm appalled, I represent many neighbors in the community. This is absolutely insane, absolutely insane. I will take it upon myself to personally sue every applicant on this uh.
All right, okay, we're not going to have any threats of this Altobelli, can somebody, when you do with the threats, we're going to, we're going to, I heard you, thank you very much, but we're, we're not doing that.
You're not, that's okay, but when our backyards and our houses are flooding.
Yeah.
Is a problem.
Thank you. So the commission is here for anybody who's watching online, and I've said it before. We have an applicant come before us, they give us their position. Public then can come or or anybody opposed to it can come and give us their reasoned uh, opposition to it. But any threats to any members of the commission or to applicants will not be. Um, uh, we're not going to condone that, we're not going to listen to it. We we have the information about animal life, about aquatic life, if there is. We have all this information, we have reports, we have all of these things. And now, based on what the rules say. If if the commission decides to close the public hearing today, we will have thirty five days to make our decision.
Hi, this is Justin Motel, I had a question, I'm at one three six Borowski, I did speak before, I did have a question uh, for. Uh, David Ginter, um, I know it was hopefully just a Freudian slip, but, you know, referring to the applicant as the client. But has his firm done business with their engineering firm at all? I just, I just want to make sure there's no.
Sorry, can, can you, can you repeat your name and address, please?
Absolutely, it's Justin Motel, I'm at one three six Borowski in Fairfield.
Now, do you have any information to provide us?
I was just asking, I was just, based on that statement, if 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 those firms had done business, if there's any conflict of interest. With the two engineering firms, that's all.
Since he called our client.
If, who's done? Whether which?
David Ginter and his firm, EDM or?
I don't think that's relevant.
It's not relevant, so thank you though, but uh, if you have any information to provide, that's fine, otherwise that that's not relevant.
And I, in the past, I did email the pictures of uh, that are mail carrier taken of the bobcats and other species. I didn't get confirmation.
We we believe, we've seen them and if if it was emailed to us, I think I've actually seen it and I think we have seen it because all the emails come to us and it's become part of the record, right? We, we believe, we've seen them and if, if it was emailed to us, I think I've actually seen it and I think we have seen it because all the emails come to us and it's become part of the record, right?
All right. Thanks.
Motion that we close the public hearing.
Okay, would anybody like to second that? Okay, one more. Anybody else? Any comments before we do that? Comments, uh, information to provide us either for or against?
Hi, my name is Jessica. Am I on?
You are. Can you give us your name and address?
Uh, my name is Jessica Emmon. I live at forty-one Oakwood. I just had a question, um, and maybe this was addressed and I missed it. Will this impact the water table at all? Because it's already very high in this neighborhood. Since it rained like a week and a half ago, my sump pump has been going nonstop because water just keeps coming into my basement. So I was just curious, I don't know if it's been addressed or not.
Not sure. I'm not, yeah, it, it.
That doesn't apply.
So it, again, it, the, the information has to be provided by you. None of us here have, are going to be able to answer that because it's not part of what's required. So, um, there are reports that were provided that talk about the two year, ten year storm requirements. All, all of those things are in there. But as far as specifically dealing with a water table, that's not anything that's dealt with. So we wouldn't be able to answer that. You know, a, a, as far as, is there going to be flooding? Post-development on downwind? I think that, that is what those reports are there for. And there's, and the applicant's reports are saying that that's been dealt with and it's actually, what, less, I guess, at the three point something mark. So that's, the reports are there, um, but the water table part, we can't answer.
There could be somebody in the audience that wants to speak, I think.
Yeah, okay. Anybody here in the audience that, uh, live in the room that would like to say anything either for or against?
Okay.
Nope? Okay.
The same motion.
The motion, Commissioner Fane, make the motion, oppose the public hearing. Anybody second that?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Luschey seconds that. All in favor? Aye. Okay, so the public hearing portion of this shows, there will be no decision tonight. Thank you. All right, and let's move on to, from the nine other scheduled currently pending to reconvene subcommittee to review proposed in the what?
Yeah, well, we're going to work on it. I think we have got things to schedule. Tim and I have to work on the regulations on the fee schedule and then also I think in March, we're going to have that reschedule that workshop.
Okay, I, I, I want to, um, I want to ask any other commissioners, um, who would, right now it's, it's Commissioner Fane, Commissioner Amanda Martin Campbell. And it's him, I guess, then they work with him. One more commissioner want to assist them? Excellent. I am appointing to the subcommittee, Mr. Commissioner Ted Wissinger. I have no idea. So.
There you go.
It now, okay? So that, one more. Anybody else with anything to discuss, others? No, we're good? Then we are adjourned.